Counselor Argamond, number one.
Counselor Vogel, number two.
Allison Harquist, number four.
Counselor Cameron, number eight.
Kinsey, number nine.
Junta, ten.
Counselor Tontau, number eleven.
Counselor Cronin, number twelve.
Would you like to start with a moment of silence to call the UIT directors on Kavanaugh's motherhood recently passed away? Do you want to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ari, number five.
Counselor Cronin.
President.
Counselor Argamond.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
President.
Counselor Harquist.
President.
Counselor Hearsaw.
Here.
Counselor Kinsey.
Here.
Counselor Tontau.
President.
Counselor Vogel.
Here.
Counselor Cameron.
President.
Counselor O'Brien, absent. Counselor President, pro temum.
President.
Let's see if there's a late file items, at least we have two late file items. We'll try to identify them.
The counselors have on their desk Handicap Parking Ordinance Number Six, made by Counselor Tontau, that's late file. There is the mayor's comment, which is a late file. And there is not a late file, it's just revised ordinance, adjusting some language on the road race, which is in your package.
You want to raise rules and then you have...
Motion to raise rules, I thought you said late file items may be accepted.
Second. Second discussion. All those who voted. Hi.
Ari.
And those who voted are placed in the agenda. I guess we can start with the public comment. We can start with, and I apologize, I believe this is Michael E. Tressman. Michael? Yankee Homecoming?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I didn't realize our information was under Communications, I can wait that.
May I have the time to speak?
Oh, thank you. I apologize. My name's Michael Volplone, I'm the general chair for this year's Yankee Homecoming, and I'm just asking for the use of the cities, the streets, and the parks for this year's homecoming. I apologize for the lateness of getting this done this year, so.
Thank you very much, thank you. Dana Wiles.
Mr. Presidents and Councilors, my name's Dana Wiles, I'm the master of Bethany Lodge and Freemasons here in Newburyport. Not long ago, we had an event where, that we hosted, where we brought the World Series trophy here to Newburyport. Any of you knew of this? And it was our goal to raise funds through donations at that event to go towards the construction of a baseball field here in Newburyport for the kids in Newburyport. Upon completing that, I was informed by the Toronto Mayor that I have to come before you, Will, for any amount over $500. Hence, I'm here, hence it's over 500. So, I'm very pleased to be able to present the city council with a check made up to the city of Newburyport for $1,000 from Bethany Lodge to go towards a new...
Can we get it?
We'd love to, we'd love to. Give us a line, we'll do more.
Twice a month, that's all.
Gloria, this is power, I can't report you.
Good evening, my name is Gloria Corriere, I live at 22 Fair Street, and I'm Mr. Deputy Knight. In regard to the one hour, about two hour parking signs being installed on Fair Street from Liberty to Water Street, there are 21 residents and 14 driveways that accommodate at least 24 cars in this area. There are six residents who have rented or purchased homes in this area with no driveways. So, there are, I watch my neighbors every day play musical chairs on the street with their cars to leave room for people to park. I have a one car driveway that I use. My son, also a Newburyport resident, parks behind me along the street, so I don't even use anything in the street. Most of the complaints you live here are cars being parked overnight in front of their homes, while two hour parking is not the answer. According to an email from Counselor Argamond, two hour parking is from Monday to Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which means Monday through Thursday, anybody can park from 4:00 p.m. in the afternoon until 10:00 a.m. the following morning. And on Friday, from 4:00 p.m. until 10:00 a.m. on Monday morning. So, I don't think two hour parking is your answer. Most of the people who have always parked in their driveways will now be parking in the street to leave their driveways open for family, friends, and guests. As for getting one pass, it doesn't work. Either you forget to give it to them, or they forget to put it on their mirror, or they leave with it. The last time two hour signs were put up on Fair Street on a Thursday morning in one hour, I got 73 names on a petition in the neighborhood, and they were taken down. I can't do it again. I want to thank you for listening, if you do decide you're keeping these signups, at least have the wording, say it, "Two hour parking in effect, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m." Also, the Salvation Army should have signs up saying Salvation Parking Only on Water Street, on Fair Street from Water to their parking lot. They perform many services for this city. I don't believe most people are aware of just how much good work they do here. Mostly it's the volunteers that get tickets. Thank you.
Lindy Lanthir, 347 High Street, and I wanted to talk on behalf of the Salvation Army, which is an organization that does so much for Newburyport and the surrounding communities that it's impossible to mention everything. And the taking of on-street parking for residents only could only hurt the function of the Salvation Army and could even force the organization to move. I would hope that the city council would not want to hurt this organization that's been in our community and is well-respected and even admired by their own neighbors. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to allow the ordinance for fair street parking for residents only to include, if they go forward with that, parking for the Salvation Army only, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. on the west side of the street, from Water Street to the entrance of their parking lot, at the very least, and maybe anything else you can do to help them. Thank you.
Dana Young.
Yes, sir. If I may say so, parking is, seems to be what Tip O'Neill said was the third rail of American politics, if you will. Now, there are a lot of, Tip O'Neill said a lot of things, something about a billion here, a billion there, pretty soon we're talking real money, but I'm here to talk about parking on Franklin Street. We were recently confronted with, at the end of May, with the decision to post a no parking zone on Franklin Street between 8:00 and 10:00 Franklin, running on the west side of the street down to Water Street. In regard to that, I'm here tonight representing myself and 154 other people who signed what I understand to be the first citizens petition, pardon, first pre-petition under the new city charter this year, so I feel like a first-time caller in some ways. I think there's certain, parking's always an issue around here, folks have been parking in those spaces on that street for decades. As a matter of fact, I understand that of the folks that originally supported that petition, the few folks that did, one particular married couple cannot park in front of their own home anymore, and while they have a very, very small driveway, the wife is an orderly at Anna Jake's Hospital, and she comes home very late at night. And I'll only speak for myself to say that we all like our wives to park a little closer to home late at night rather than a little bit later. There's also the law of unintended consequences, if you will. I've heard in my petition drives, which have been very good for my waistline as I've walked around them, and I had knee surgeries last year, so it's helped that as well, we've heard from people who say that, just like a street that has potholes and gets repaved, the residents normally don't want that street to be repaved because people tend to speed up coming down the street. Well, there are a lot of children on that street, and a lot of folks with a lot of children, and they're very, very concerned that people are speeding up because the end of the street is wide open now, if you will. So, in retrospect, I'll speak only for myself tonight, although I am indeed representing those 154 other folks. I know they'll have their own say in a couple of weeks when this comes to a more robust hearing, if you will. We're asking the city council, through the free petition process, to revisit that decision, to hear from those other folks, and to see if we can arrive at some compromise, if that's the right word, that will... I'm like Lincoln, I like to satisfy everybody, I don't know if that's ever possible, but we'd like to get some of those parking spaces back, if not all of them, and we'd like safety obviously to be a consideration as well, because it is a narrow street. The whole south end, and as bad as that, the whole north end, the whole city of Newburyport was designed for horses, buggies, and garages, not automobiles. So, once again, parking is the third rail of American politics, I wish you the best with that, and I don't envy any of you, your jobs. And I thank you for listening, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Next is Renee Pappa. I hope you're minded, people to please limit their comments to two minutes.
Hi, my name's Renee Pappa, and I live at 4 Franklin Street. I initiated the no parking, which affects three cars directly in front of my house. You have to understand, yes, it is a very narrow corridor. Cars would park up against my front door, to the point where I couldn't even open my front door because they didn't want their car to be impacted by traffic. For service vehicles that would come down this narrow corridor, if they couldn't get up on my neighbor across the street onto his property, they would stop the vehicle, come and knock on my door and say, "Could you please move your car?" Guess what? It's not my car. I've never been able to park on Franklin Street. I'm homeowner, I have to rent to park my car. I've just given up on parking on Franklin Street. So, for me, it's a safety issue. My neighbor across the street, in order for him to get out of his driveway, has to do like an 18-point turn. Fire trucks struggle getting through, and yes, my neighbor is an elderly person, God forbid, and anyone should have to come and not get through. So, that was my argument, for me, it's a safety issue. Three cars impacted, all belong to renters, and a building plus two businesses operating. It's a very busy three parking space corner. Thank you very much.
Mark, I believe it's Rosen.
Yes. I'm Mark Rosen, I live at 20 Fair Street, and I represent myself, my wife Paula Estey, and our co-owners of the 1820 Fair Street Condominium Trust. And we're all in agreement with everybody else in this room that our street, Fair Street, bottom part, is no different than any other street in the neighborhood, and therefore, since every other street in the neighborhood has two hour parking signs, we think we should too, because when we don't, that drives more people to park on our end of Fair Street. Just logic. We had a meeting, when Greg Earls was still here, that was a public meeting, announced to the neighborhood, and there definitely was an overwhelming support for re-establishing two hour parking. Thanks to Mr. Argamond, that was accomplished, and the signs are up. And now, I'm just encouraging everybody to kind of wait and see what happens. Now, at the same time, I fully support the needs of the Salvation Army, 100%, and I understand there's going to be a motion put forward tonight to attempt to fix their problem, which would be to limit parking right in front of their property. On Water Street, there is no limited parking adjacent to the Salvation Army, that's a fact, and they also own a parking lot that does not have one sign, not one, that says "Parking here for Salvation Army only," and their volunteers, and their workers, and whatever else you want to say in this sign. I'm curious to know why just that alone has never been done. So, they have a parking lot, they have parking adjacent on Water Street, and also on Pike Street is a couple of spaces available for anybody to park anytime, including one handicap spot. So, this whole thing, at this point, doesn't make any sense to, we had them up, we took them down, we're going to put them up again, we're going to take them down again, just based on a lot of emotional response to a situation that I think we just need to see how it goes. Thank you.
Paula Estey.
My name is Paula Estey from 20 Fair Street, and really, I just want to say thank you to Counselor Argamond for his thoroughness, because we started emailing several months ago, and questions back and forth, and he was always, always forthcoming with the answers. And the last email that I got from him seemed so thorough, a win-win situation for all involved, that I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope that everybody supports you.
Tom Sullivan.
Yeah, I'm Tom Sullivan from 16 Ting Street. I'm chairman of the NRA, and I'd like to just thank the council for supplying us with two great, pleasant members, Leslie, that called us here today, and Bob, you're adding great energy and expertise and perspective to the board, and we're excited to get started. We are working to schedule our first meeting. Sometime this month, we're having some issues with conflicts. We'll get together, and I understand there's a sentiment on behalf of your board that you'd like to meet with us again. I think it's mutual, and I'd like to work to get that scheduled as soon as possible. But first, we'd like to have a chance to meet one another, say hello, and get some business done, and then we'll reach out to the council or accept your invitation and sit down and hopefully this summer for perhaps a time. So, thank you again for your appointments, and we'll go to work.
Rick. Can't be left, kind of. Acati?
Thank you very much, my name is Ricky Acati, I live at 13 Fair Street. I'm here in favor of the two hour parking, you know, the blessing of Salvation Army. I do think we'll be able to work together with getting some parking spaces and visitor spots and whatever we need. Otherwise, the rest of the block should be residents. Constantly, when we come out, we see people from downtown who work there, parking out in front of your property and from my property, day after day after day. From David Hall, who doesn't allow his employees to park over there, they're there all the time. This two hour is crucial, especially from the neighbors who are really here for, who will talk very shortly, who don't have parking, they're young couples, they have kids, they go to the grocery store, they come back, and the parking spot's gone. People are there all day long. This two hour is crucial, the rest, pretty much the rest of our neighborhood has the two hour parking, so we get all the spillage from downtown. Somebody else who mentioned earlier that the two hour would not be deterrent, I believe it is, even in off times. If you go to the north end and you see a two hour parking, you're not going to park there, so I think it would also help even in the hours that it's not destined for. Thank you.
Scott Allen.
Hi, thanks for the time, I'm starting to dress up, but I live at 8 Fair Street, and I'm speaking in favor of two hour parking, the young couples, which I don't remember. We have a three-year-old and a five-month-old, and it's a lot of hassle in coming in and out of the house, and just last week, when the two hour parking signs have been up, it's been amazing, it's been easy, it's been great, it's been a definite life benefit for us. And there was also mention earlier about a petition of 72 people, just for the record, my wife and I didn't sign the petition. And otherwise, just, we're really in favor of it. Thanks.
Joe Shaka, Boston.
Hi, my name is Joe Shaka, I live at 10 Fair Street, just up from Scott. I have a family of three, young daughter, five-year-old daughter. We do not have driveway parking, we are on-street parking. I'm 100% in favor of the two hour parking. I think I agree with Scott, it's a deterrent, I think it would be, I think it is effective already, we've already seen in two days that it's been there. And I'd like to thank you for listening, and I appreciate your concern on the matter. I am all for hounding the Salvation Army in any way, shape, or form, they're a great neighbor, and I would reiterate what Scott had said, that petition, with all due respect for Gloria, who's a great neighbor, I would guarantee you, nobody on Fair Street signed that petition, though. Thank you.
I feel like it's a broken record, sorry. I live at 1 Fair Street, we have lived across the street from the Salvation Army for 25 years. We work, I think, incredibly well together, we're very cooperative, but we too have seen that with the two hour, we wake up, I happen to work from home, so I come down, get my coffee, and I look across the street, every day, it's someone parked there all day long, which is preventing his clients from coming in and out. So, if you either keep it two hour, or you accommodate them, at least there'll be some room, some flow, so people can come in and out of the Salvation Army. I want the neighborhood to work together, we don't want anybody to be upset with each other, we'd like to find a nice compromise, but we are in favor of two hour parking. Thank you.
Lou Valley.
How you doing? I'm Lou Valley, I live at 9 Fair Street, and I've lived there since, I think, 1949. So, I'm the oldest neighbor. I lived there before everybody had a car. And I can remember my father dragging me uptown in the sled, and you guys didn't plow the streets. But the best thing that matters is, it has been good. The parking's been excellent for the last day and a half. I have no complaints, no complaints. They did the right thing, leave the damn signs alone, leave them up. People will take care of the problem. You should send people around to see who's parked there. We got stickers, we all have stickers on our car, and the city clerk reminded me that I'll need the sticker. So, I would, I would please, please take care. As far as the Salvation Army, I have no place, no problem with making accommodations for them. But this thing about, you know, like somebody said, "Well, you shouldn't have bought a house without a driveway." Well, I didn't have anything to say about it. My father bought the house, he paid $1,600 for the house. And the house, he had to rehab the whole house. Okay, so, that's the way it is, and he was fresh out of the Navy. Thank you very much.
And now, we'll move on to the mayors.
Good evening, counselors, it's a pleasure to be before you again tonight to give you an update. It's been several weeks, and it certainly has been very busy last three weeks since we've been together. Just before I started, wanted to point out, those of you who might not have noticed, that last night, the tagger was added again. Not only did they do the Woodya Bridge project several weeks ago, that they're working to try and figure out how to get the graffiti off, but they hit one of the turrets down on N Street, and some of the pipes for the fountain. So, they're going through the video cameras to see if we can pick up who did it. Peter and I happened to locate the spray can in the trash next to it, so called the police and said, "Come get the evidence," so we'll, you know, hopefully be able to catch this person, and refocus cameras, and get that cleaned off as soon as possible, especially before the fourth. So, I just wanted you all to know that we're addressing that. I think the biggest news that I have to share with you is that we are finally at a point where we're putting a shovel in the ground to start repairs at Plum Island Water and Sewer. We are over three years since that last burst, since the first water main break, and particularly over the last year and a half, working with the Attorney General and C.D.M. Smith, and their legal counsel, our counsel, DPS, and DEP, and their counsel, trying to come to terms with how we begin the fix of this project. And I'm very pleased to say that we have established the first round of protocol, which will include the repair of 32 hydrants that are located in various geographic locations across the island, and they were selected purposely so that we could have samplings of different groundwater soils, as well as elevation, so we can begin to sort of extrapolate that information, determine, you know, what's really happening in those areas in terms of corrosion. We met with the neighbors, Allison Harquist, Ward One Counselor, was there at the meeting last week with the residents, and we are encouraging all residents on Plum Island, Newbury, and Newbury Portside to ensure that they have signed up for Code Red, our reverse 911, so that we can keep them updated as the construction goes forward. We anticipate doing one hydrant per day, and the, that's to start on July 7. As they go in to replace the hydrants, ultimately, all 147 hydrants will be replaced, they will be taking samples of the metals that are in the water and/or sewer system, tees, gate valves, checking to see the status of them, and if they are severely corroded, they will be replaced. Other samples will be taken and sent to a lab in Rhode Island. Once all the analysis is in, after these 32 sites are excavated, we will begin to put further information together, and I anticipate being back before you, hopefully in September, where we can begin to talk about the results of these, the findings, and what our next steps are. But I'm just really pleased that we're finally moving forward on this project, and we hope to limit the amount of impact to summer rentals, as well as homeowners on the island, to four to eight hours of water turnoff, just in that immediate vicinity of that hydrant. The Merrimack River Beach Alliance is having very productive meetings at this point. This is an organization that was put together under Senator Bruce Tar, that works with Newbury, Newbury Salisbury, Newbury, and Newbury Port to address issues around the river and erosion, and I'm very pleased to say that the South Jetty is complete in terms of repair, and Congressman Tierney was instrumental in obtaining the needed funding for us to start design and repair of the North Jetty, which should happen fairly soon. In terms of personnel, I had sent you an email to the city council last week in terms of some of the changes. As I informed you, I am very sad to say that our HR director for several years, past four and a half years, Jenny Lamar, is moving back to her home in California, and her work that she has done to take a, what we had was no system in terms of HR, and to build a very, very solid HR system that's in compliance with federal and state law, and increased confidentiality, working with our public employee pet group, saving the city millions of dollars in terms of health insurance, and I just, on behalf of the entire city, I wish her, wish her well, and thank her for the years of great service and commitment that she has provided to our community. Matt Lipinski, who has been our animal control officer, has accepted a position in Beverly, and that position has been posted, and we're working on interim strategies. We're also working on interim strategies to, as we've posted the HR director's position, as we work forward to replace that position. And Paul Kobe is the other individual I wanted to let you know about, he's been with us 38 years, as, most recently, as our water superintendent, and he will be retiring in September, so his position has also been posted. And we had over 60 applicants for the assistant auditor position, and we're down to the final three?
Two.
Oh, so we're making headway, and should have an assistant auditor shortly. In terms of things that are happening in the planning department, we are awaiting our proposals to be submitted for the Kelly School, the Brown School, and the Senior Community Center, those will all be coming in over the next several weeks, and this is a very exciting time for our city to move forward on those particular projects. The Intermodal Facility, as I have mentioned to you, I had scheduled a meeting with the Undersecretary of Administration and Finance. Our goal is to try and get the $5 million that was placed by our Senator Ives and Congressman, not Congressman, Representative Costello, in the Transportation Bond Bill. We had a very, very productive meeting, our planning director, Andy Port, did an exemplary job presenting the, you know, the real economic need for this interim... need for this Intermodal Facility, and as we go forward, and also had a chance to talk to Secretary Davy, Secretary of Transportation for the state this past week, who has also been briefed on the project. So we're hoping that as these final decisions regarding the next Transportation Bond Bill are solidified by the governor, that Newbury Port has that $5 million in the pipeline for our new garage. We, um, in terms of, Tom, so let me just talk to you about the Newbury Port Development Authority. Governor's appointment is moving forward, and I know that we had asked for a meeting to have a more robust roundtable, as you will, than we did in early February with the NRA, City and City Council, and as you heard, Tom Solimi had asked that he have a chance to have a couple of meetings with his new membership, before we sit down and have that joint meeting. So we anticipate probably mid to late August on that. First Republic, this is something we've been working on for a couple of years with the new CEO and other executive staff. The First Republic, as you recall, with the failed financing on, by the toll building, and those buildings have been sitting on Marimack Street, boarded up with plastic now for five, six years, and that's absurd, given the market in terms of property values and what's happening in the realty market in Newbury Port. So we've been pushing and pushing, and I understand that we can expect some movement on those properties over the next several weeks. I will certainly keep you up to date once we have a more definitive date. You most likely have heard that Cabot Stain, now Valspar, is closing. Valspar is moving their manufacturing. They are decommissioning the building. We met with their team, attorneys, realtors, the owner of Cabot Stain, this past week to talk about reuse of this building, and will be working with Mass Office of Business Development, some other options, and we also assured them that we will work with them around zoning, because that site is now currently just industrial, and we said absolutely not. We can work with you around whatever type of company that you want to bring in to that site. So I'm hopeful that in partnership, that we will move that process forward, and that building will not be vacant for very long. And we've been working with the, as you know, we're members of the Marimack Valley Planning Commission, and we meet monthly with the mayors and managers from 15 communities in Marimack Valley, and we have decided that our main focus priority will be economic development for the Marimack Valley region, and we'll be working to bring back a website that was pretty robust. Marimack Valley means business, but it has left to go stagnant, and trying to upgrade that and also include the LoopNet for posting commercial properties and other business properties that are available throughout Marimack Valley. Woodya Bridge Project, they've started the pile driving for the new Pine Hill Bridge this past week. We had a meeting with the abutters again, and three abutters showed up versus 50 or 60, I think, our last meeting. It was a very difficult meeting, but I think it means that communication between Mass DOT as well as Walshham Court has improved significantly with the residents and the abutters, and things seem to be better in terms of them informing than what's going on, particularly a lot of residents out there who aren't on Internet. The school projects are, it's just incredibly exciting in terms of where we are with growth projects, particularly the Brestahin, where in the 90, low 90% completion, and had a big tag sale this weekend for the NEF, and made about $4,300 roughly. Had lots of schools and teachers and from other communities, Haverhill, Kenya, come and make donations and take tables and chairs and school supplies out of the building. Other pieces were removed today, and they will start the abatement in that building, and then, once the abatement is complete, that building will come down in the next several weeks, and then in September, we'll be doing the groundbreaking for the Senior Community Center on that site. The projects are going well at Nock Mullen. Also, the only project inside the Nock Mullen School that we anticipate being delayed is the auditorium, and that will be probably the 13th or 17th of September, so just a few weeks delayed in terms of finishing that project. There was some unforeseen vet work that is causing the delay. Field projects, um, we're struggling with the stadium, because after a walkthrough and looking how long it will be to demolish the visitor stands, they're attached to the school building, and will need four or five weeks, maybe longer, to demolish that. And how do you demolish a stadium when kids are in school? There's science labs right there, so we're meeting next week on the 7th to try and figure out a way that we can, you know, maybe do this in stages, but, you know, we, obviously, the money is now solidified through the CPC and the Institute for Savings, and we very much like to move forward on this project. We also are, anticipate meeting the general government to figure out the best way to move forward on the reallocation of a million dollars that's in surplus from the Brestahin School project, and how we move forward on dealing with the Fuller Field. We have, you know, a state champion lacrosse team, soccer team, track teams, and we need to have the appropriate spaces for our youth, as well as other organizations that use our fields in the city. In terms of public safety, we had our second roundtable on the 17th out at Parker River, where Public Safety came together with the Anna Jakes Hospital, emergency staff, emergency services, environmental police, and Marshall Howard put together a scenario that could potentially occur during Yankee Homecoming event, and it was a very good use of our time in communication and identifying roles and responsibilities, and it's really important for our community, especially unfortunately in this day and age, to prepare for events like that, that can happen. I'm not going to read through all the roads and sidewalks that are in your packet, but they will be posted on the city website, but that gives you an update on where we are. I think one of the most important things that we have finally made decisions on are standard operating protocol for bricks, what needs to be underneath the bricks, how, what types of bricks will be used, the stamp, the color for stamped cement, if someone would like to go with a foam brick, if you will, and cement sidewalks, and with the handicap brands. So we've, we've identified all of those pieces, and we will be putting together pictures of those for all of you to review. And again, that will be on the website. In terms of transfers before you in the City Council tonight, I believe that you have sufficient supportive information regarding all of the transfers, but certainly staff from DPS are here to answer any of those questions, as well as Peter Lombardi. So thank you once again for your time, and if you have any questions for me. Yes, Councilor Herzog.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of information. Real quick, can you briefly elaborate on the Kelly School and the Brown School?
You mentioned that work is underway on both in regard to what?
No, no, not work. The, um, they went out to bid, the RFQ and the feasibility study that you approved the funding for. So those went out to bid, and we anticipate those proposals coming back in. In fact, I think one was received today for the Kelly School. So we anticipate those full proposals for development of the Kelly School. We'll see, buy-in condos, you know, it's hard to know what each of the development proposals will be, but certainly we will share those with you as they come in, and those are due on the 7th. I think the 17th is for the Brown School, and the 23rd are the contractor for the Senior Community Center, and then sub-bids, I think, are a couple of weeks out from there. So we have all of these proposals coming in as we move forward. Does that help?
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I think it's time to move forward to the consent agenda. I, at the request of Counselor Vogel, Communication Number 13 is out. Are there any other items that members would like to see removed from the consent agenda? I'm sorry?
Can you go through so they can read this, sir?
Uh, yeah, if, if the clerk could, could read through that, please.
So the consent agenda this evening consisted of the approval of the minutes for June 9th. There are five transfers. First transfer is DPS Water, retained earnings $400,000, to the Upper Ottochoke Dam Project, same amount. All five are to be referred to Budget and Finance. The second is free cash, $29,525, to Road and Paving, same amount. Third is free cash, $19,661, to Green Initiatives Fund, same amount. DPS Water retained earnings $520,000, to Budget Reserve, same amount. And DPS Sewer retained earnings $315,000, to FY 2015, Budget Reserve, same amount. There are 13 communications, now 12, with 13 being put in the regular agenda. First is the Block Party on Dove and Monroe Streets, in for approval. Second is the Letter Regarding Transient Vendor Licensing, to be referred to License and Permits. Third is the Annual Newbury Port Firefighter Boot Drive, July 31st to August 2nd in Market Square, it's in for approval. Fourth is the Police Superior's Negotiation Tentative Agreement, that's to be referred to Budget and Finance. Fifth is the Fourth Annual 5K Run Walk for Varian Cancer, September 28, 2014, to Public Safety. Sixth is Green Stride, One-Half Marathon, October 26, 2014, Public Safety. Seventh is the Energy Advisory Committee Letter Regarding Lights on Private Property, referred to Public Utilities. Next is River Run, One-Half Marathon and 5K, May 31, 2015, again, Public Safety. Ninth is the Citizens Petition for Reconsideration of Franklin Street, No Parking Zone, to Public Safety. I might add, that's triggered a hearing request under the new charter, so that is now scheduled for 7:00 PM, July 14th. The Communication Number 10, Exchange Club Field of Honor Program, a table in Market Square, July 19th, August 23rd, and 30th, in for approval. The 11th is a letter requesting use of the streets and sidewalks during Yankee Homecoming from Mike Falpon. That's in for approval. 12th is the Human Resources Dependent Audit, to be referred to Budget and Finance. 13, as I said, is out. There are three, first reading of appointments. First is Richard Traister, MD, 325 Marimack Street, to the Disabilities Commission until June 30, 2017. There are two reappointments. Brian Burnout, 83 Garden Street, West Newbury, as a Constable for City Business until July 1, 2017. And lastly, Daniel Scott, 4 Ferry Road, Methuen, Hobber Master, and Special Police Officer, until April 15, 2017. And that, with the exclusion of Communication Number 13, is the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve is amended. Uh, just a moment, are there any other items that members would like to remove?
Just, I don't know if this is removing it, but the agenda, or the minutes from the last meeting, there's one question I had, and that's page, uh, this would be the third, fourth page of the minutes, under Executive Session, number 13.
Mm-hmm.
Where it says, "Motion to go under Executive Session, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to discuss the reputation."
Do you want clarification on that?
Yeah, I thought it would have been, like, to discuss the personnel matter, or?
Uh, I think it's actually right off the, um, here's my cheat sheet. See, I don't have my cheat sheet, but there's so many provisions under the new, uh, general law, and that's one of them, discuss, I think, personnel reputation. In fact, I got it right here, actually.
Okay, so when we say reputation, it was personnel reputation?
It just says to discuss reputation. You could say character, physical condition, mental health, et cetera.
Okay.
But it's number one.
Okay. Sounds good.
It's generic, it's generic for a purpose, I think.
So maybe in the future, we should be a little more verbose in matters to, to address points in terms of our respect.
We can add whatever you like, actually.
Are there any other items that members would like to call our attention to, or pull out of the consent agenda? Hearing none, left to which the council?
Motion to approve is amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we can move on to the regular agenda. First will be, uh, a late file of the mayor's update, then retain a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. What's next, uh?
That would be the Communication Number 13 Letter to the Health Department regarding enforcement. I might add, as it said in the agenda, President O'Brien instructed me to send a copy to the Board of Health, which I did.
Thank you.
Would you like me to read part of this, or not?
Would you please?
Uh, it is from Counselor Vogel, Counselor-at-Large, to Thomas O'Brien, present members of the City Council, Regarding Health Director. Dear President O'Brien, members of the council, there have been numerous concerns, questions, complaints, and frustrations expressed to me by members of the community in regard to the manner of enforcement and approach by the Director of Public Health, Robert Bracy. As a result, I'd like to request that the council, through the use of Section 2-7, A and B of the Homeworld Charter, refer the matter to License and Permits Committee in order that the affirmation, questions, concerns, complaints, et cetera, can be discussed. Intent is to assist the Director in drafting an approach that presents Newbury Port as a community welcoming to business, and then the section of the Homeworld Charter is recited, and that's the letter.
Motion to refer to License and Permits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Vogel.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, councilors. The letter is self-explanatory, and it is so rich in content, I could go on for days. There's also was a letter that we received from councilors from a, that, from another party that called in to question both my hypocrisy and myself, my being self-serving to bring this forward. This letter, as I say, that I'm sending to you and asking that it go to License and Permits, so that we can have a conversation with Mr. Bracy, is just that. As a business owner in the city of Newbury Port, in the industry, or if you will, or the business of a restaurant, I've received a number of complaints since I've owned this business for the last three and a half years. People that have come to me know that I'm involved with the city, or that I keep in touch with the city, and they felt free to come forward to me and, and explain to me the difficulties that they had with the Health Department, if you will. And in fact, this issue was part of my platform when I ran. I spoke upfront about the need for the city Health Department, or the Director of the Health Department, to be a little bit more conscientious in his approach to businesses. And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to sit down with him and discuss some of these issues, and bring forward a plan, if you will, in order to solve some of these, these issues. As far as it being self-serving, I'm a business owner in this community, and as such, I'm a business owner of a restaurant, if you will, or at least a coffee shop in this community, and that, that sense makes me a bit of an expert in that, that area. We, we have many experts on this board. We have an expert in ordinances, we have an expert in public safety. We have many, many experts, if you will. And so I come forward as that expert, and I, and knowing that any decision that I make could affect my, my business, I went to the Ethics Commission. And I, if you think about it, if I make, if I make a decision about the waterfront, if I make a decision about A-frame signs, if I make a decision or a vote on, on anything affecting businesses in this community, it could be self-serving. It, I could be making those decisions on my behalf, and I explained this to the, to the Ethics Commission. And they said to me, "Well, gee, that's really nice of you to be thinking about that," but the fact of the matter is, is you're one small fish in one very large pond. And in fact, that I will be making decisions along these matters may be beneficial to me, they may be detrimental to me as a business owner, and so long as it is not all the way down to the nitty-gritty where that decision affects me absolutely specifically, I'm in good graces, good grace, graces with the Ethics Commission. And should it ever get to that point, you can rest assured that I will recuse myself. But in the meantime, I am allowed by the Ethics Commission to make these observations and to vote on these issues that affect businesses in this community. This has been put forth in a disclosure statement, is on file with the city clerk. I urge anybody in the community to go forward and read that, that disclosure, and I look forward to continuing to serve the community, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Herzog.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a firmly amendment to also send the district of the community the whole to sit, since it involves a department head.
Is that acceptable to the sponsor?
Absolutely.
Very well. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the, the matter is referred to Committee on License and Permits and Committee on the Whole.
whole. What's next up, Mr. Clerk? Are we up to orders now?
Order number one, which is the City Council approves the following licensed contractor for 2014 construction year, Abbey 891 Management from Marlboro, New Hampshire, submitted, I read, being Herzog.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, that is unanimous. I guess it was.
Order number two.
Order number two is regarding revolving funds. There are a number of them. It says, it's an annual event, the city establishes revolving funds for certain city departments under Chapter 4453E and one-half for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2014, with specific receipts credited to each fund purposes for which each fund may be spent. And the maximum amount that may be spent from each fund for the fiscal year are as follows. I will do what the President wishes me to, which probably do not wish me to read every one of them, but I will, if you would like.
Could you just identify the funds? How many are there?
There are, there's plumbing, there's gas, there's electrical, these are revolving funds, Disability Commission, Downtown Paid Parking, Council on Aging, Pre-Commission, Animal Control, Transient Vendors, Medicare, Historic Commission, Planning and Zoning, Engineering, City Hall Maintenance, South End Branch, Veterans Benefits, Recreational Services, M-School Drop-In Center. I'm going to crap smarter than I can.
Okay. Are there any, those two, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let me just ask the clerk for a ruling. Is that the appropriate motion, or do we refer to?
It can be. I mean, it's the end of fiscal year, I would imagine the Director of Finance would like them approved.
I think so.
So, I mean, it could go to committee, it could be approved tonight, it's up to the world council.
All right, is there any discussion? Or are there any questions members would like to ask of the auditor, since he's here? Councilor Tantar.
I just moved to approve this. It is the end of the fiscal year. It would be beneficial if the revolving funds were established on the first day of the fiscal year, which is tomorrow, and I think everything's in order, and I see no reason to send it to committee.
Councilor Herzog.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to the Chair, I guess my, my only question is, the Budget and Finance Committee currently has in committee two items for March, I believe Councilor Cronin, as I recall, it's sponsored in order regarding revolving fund expenses, followed up by a mayoral response to that, and so I was only wondering if by approving this tonight, if those two items would also be then taken out, or if there might be some future discussion down the road.
Councilor Cronin?
Thank you. My, my concern was, and still is, the paid parking downtown, and that it's a, it's a big, it's a big nut that we're, we're carrying on that. However, as I read this, it does say capital projects and the general fund transfers is determined by the mayor and City Council. So I think that we have to hold, hold the feet to the fire on that, and, and be involved, and be aware, and as such, the other order that is in council will probably be pulled, maybe not tonight, but at some point, according to the Chair.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a, just a question for either the Chair, or else Mr. Lombardi, or Ethan Manning. Have any of the amounts changed? Are these all the same as last year?
All of the spending limits are the same as they were last year, with the exception of the downtown paid parking. The, the DOR sets the spending limit at 1% of the tax levy, which would bring it, you know, close to $466,000. So we did set it right below that, so we would be in, in compliance with state law.
Just to clarify, so the 1% that only applies to downtown paid parking, or it applies to all of them?
It applies to any departmental revolving fund.
Okay, so that's as high as any of these is going to be?
That's correct.
And just a follow-up comment.
Go ahead.
Just to, you know, follow along with what Councilor Cronin said, I think for, you know, for most of these, they're, they're routine expenditures, and there doesn't require a lot of council involvement, but I do think with paid parking, you know, being a very important matter to downtown businesses, wherever they may be, that, that large capital expenditures should definitely be, you know, part of a conversation that the council is involved in. I think, you know, the last, kind of, the big repaving and everything that was done last summer, you know, I think turned out fine, and probably was the right thing to do, but I think anything that's going to be significant, other than routine landscaping and paving, I think, I think we should be involved in the conversation.
Mr. Lombardi.
If I could clarify a little bit, so of the 466, which we're capped at for this coming fiscal year, generally speaking, based on the past several fiscal year's history, to operate the paid parking program costs about $330,000 to $350,000 annually. So you're looking at essentially about $100,000, a little over $100,000 that could be put towards those landscaping improvements without coming to the council for a transfer request.
Councilor Augerman?
Yeah, I just wanted to synthesize the comments from Councilor Cronin and Councilor Cameron, and be a lawyer for a minute, and just ask, what would a significant amount be? So it could be as high, based on experience, as a hundred and, you know, a hundred-odd thousand dollars. Is that significant? I think we should probably specify to avoid a dispute later.
Good point. Councilor Cronin?
To, if I may, address Council argument. That was my attempt in the, in the order that was in there, that's sitting in committee, or languishing in committee. Unfortunately, according to DOR, the council does not have the purview to do that, and we were so informed by the mayor. So again, I, I just stand and, and just reiterate that I don't care if it's $100,000 or, or $466,000. If it's not regular maintenance, I think there should be involvement by this body.
Okay, what is the will of the council, then? Want to proceed? And what's the motion on the floor, clerk?
Approved.
Motion to approve.
First and second.
And it's been seconded, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Number three, acceptance of a grant from National Grid.
The City Council accept with gratitude a grant the amount of up to $23,743 from National Grid, Waltham, Mass., for participation in National Grid's 2014 Community Initiative Program, which awards communities for improving their energy efficiency. Submitted, Councilor Tantar.
Move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Move on to ordinances. Ordinance number one.
Ordinance number one in the packet anyways, there's a numbering issue between one and two, but the first one is the road races, walkathons, and bicycle events, and you'll see on your desk that in order to change a couple of terms, specifically $1 million to $2 million for liability insurance, and there's a paragraph, in the first paragraph, there's a clause added. That is probably too long to go through. It is first time coming in, it's submitted by Councilor Cronin. It, the purpose and intent is, if I might, city, the use of city streets and sidewalks for the purposes of road races, walkathons, bicycle tours, positive events that promote exercise, general good health, and Newburyport is a destination. These events due from time to time create hardships, impact neighborhoods in traffic to create a balance between conflicting interests, safeguard participants in these events. Residents, visitors, and the city of Newburyport, this ordinance will define and codify the procedure to ensure the safety and enjoyment of all. There's a definitions section, a limitations section, and an enforcement section.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. Discussion, Councilor Cronin, and then Councilor.
Thank you.
Vogel.
I'll be brief, but in conversation casual and other types of conversation with residents throughout the city, people are recognizing that not only is Newburyport a mecca for organized events like road races, bike races, or bike events, and, and walk, walking events, there is an impact. My wife and I moved here 24 years ago now, simply because of the Yankee Homecoming 10-mile road race. So I'm very sympathetic to road races, having completed seven Boston's, I just always have to throw that in. With, with that being said, however, there has to be a balance here, and this is a start. I'm going to ask each and every counselor to possibly look at this and offer any suggestions. You don't want to make it impossible for events, but on the other hand, it's kind of impossible, especially on the West End, for some people to leave their driveways on a regular basis, so we want to strike that balance. Thanks for listening.
Councilor Vogel?
Quick question of clarity. Does the original page get tossed, and this replaces it?
It does.
Thank you.
Mr. Cameron? And I believe the clerk mentioned this, what is the difference between the, the late file revised and the?
Well, you'll see, where it mentions $1 million of insurance, which is F under Section 13100, limitations.
Okay, I only had one page.
I only have one page, too.
Yeah.
It doesn't have the dollar amount there.
There were two pages in the packet.
Right.
And then one replacement page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole thing is supposed to be replaced.
Okay, so $2 million instead of $1 million.
Photocopy that was made, didn't you cover that? But it goes from $1 million to $2?
Yeah.
On F, of the second page?
Correct. I can read that. Insurance, all events that have insurance policy are rider-in effect for the event, naming the city of Newburyport as insured. Policy shall be no less than, originally it was $1 million. And, Counselor, the clause that was added, between the first and second one, in what section do you read?
I'm sure this will be straight down to committee then.
So page two is not complete.
It's literally a clause, but it is included in the one that is now part of the record.
Only we don't have page two, right?
I do.
Okay, well, that works.
I will get it to you.
Bad, you don't get a page two.
Didn't get any.
All right, we have a motion on the floor before?
No, no mention of paddle boards anywhere?
Not yet.
We could have that in committee.
It's a multi-disciplined event.
Oh, thank you.
It's covered. Kite surfers. All right. So we have a motion to refer this to?
Public util, public safety.
Public safety, I believe.
Is it a second?
And there has been a discussion. So if there is no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think it's referred to public safety.
If I may, Mr. President, I will scan and send this to all the councilors.
Thank you. You and me. And now we have the number, which was number one, which is now number two.
It's Chapter 13, Article 4, Parking Limited, delete from the table, State Street, Westerly Side, from the intersection of Route 1 and State Street, continuing approximately 310 feet, and in otherly direction from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, excluding holidays. Add to the table, State Street, for a period longer than four hours, between the hours of 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, during weekdays, excluding holidays, on either side, from the intersection of Route 1 and State Street, and continuing in a northerly direction approximately 1,250 feet. Submitted, Counselor Augerman.
Motion to refer to public safety. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Augerman?
My continuing effort to clog up the docket of public safety, this is to correct something that wasn't being enforced. Originally, when the district court went in, there was a, a hang-up with use of parking on the street. The problem now has changed, the neighbors have made peace with the district court. What this does, and it'll go to committee and be worked out, is allow plenty of time, four hours, for all the businesses on that end of State Street, but prevent commuters from parking there instead of going to the MBTA parking lot. That is the epidemic we're dealing with now. I urge you to vote for this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item.
Ordinance number three.
Number three.
Section 13 dash, pardon, Miss Brown, 13-168, parking restricted on certain streets, Fair Street. Parking for Salvation Army business only, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, weekdays, excluding holidays. Westerly Side of Fair Street, from the northerly edge of driveway at 2 Fair Street, 2 Water Street. Submitted, Counselor Augerman.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second.
There's a second. Discussion?
Yes, this ordinance actually goes together with the second one, to explain, especially to members of the public that came out tonight, the status quo is an ordinance that we passed in February to institute two-hour residential parking on both sides of Fair Street, between Liberty and Water. Since that time, as you heard, the signs have recently gone up with the good weather, we were able to get DPS out there, but there needs to be special accommodation for the Salvation Army. That's what this is about. It will be discussed in committee, there were many conversations with the Salvation Army and their tenant, the Council on Aging, although they're going to move, that's not going to happen for a year. It hasn't been read yet by the clerk, but the accompanying ordinance, number four, goes together with this. That's, that's, they are read together. Again, nothing will happen tonight, I'm not proposing, the status quo will remain, two-hour residential parking, we will discuss in committee, if, if we so decide, what to do with the Salvation Army. Thank you.
I might ask the sponsor if he would care to amend his motion to include item four with number three.
Yes, I, so moved.
Second.
Then there's a second.
Shall I read number four, Mr. Brown?
I don't think that's necessary, I think we know what we're doing here. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number five, ordinance number five.
Division 7 Speed Limit, add Section 13-187, 30 miles per hour. Speed limit shall be 30 miles per hour on the following streets, or portions thereof. Low Street from Sturri Avenue, for a distance of 2.29 miles in both directions. And Section 13-188, 35 miles per hour. Speed limit shall be 35 miles an hour on the following streets, or portions thereof. Low Street, from Route 1, Newburyport, for a distance of 1.91 miles in both directions. Submitted, Counselor Robert Cronin. And supporting it, there is a sheet from DOT that essentially says what the ordinance says.
Is there a motion?
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second. Any discussion? Councilor Cronin?
Sorry, I'm just, I'll make this brief. There was an issue with speed postings down on Low Street. The city of Newburyport, and this is for the people at home in the audience, the city of Newburyport, the City Council, does not set speed limits. The Mass Department of Transportation, MassDOT, does that, and these are the results of their speed lim, uh, speed survey that came back, and we're pretty well stuck with them, but this will go to committee.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So referred. And now we have handicap parking, late file?
13-179, handicap parking, we're adding Woodland Street, one space at 4 Woodland Street, until July 1st, 2016. Submitted, Counselor Tantar.
Move to refer to public safety.
Second.
Was there a second? Thank you, Councilor Tantar. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Committee items, Budget and Finance.
Move to remove item six from committee.
That's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been second. Discussion? Councilor Tantar?
Yeah, I would, I would just note on this, that apparently in the budget that passed to state, there is $35,000 that, from the state, that will come back to the city, that will be put in the general fund, and this is just so we can get going on the event. Um, per mile.
Before the end of this?
Before the end of this?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any other items in budget and finance?
Move to remove item number seven from the committee.
Second.
Mayor, second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Excuse me, go ahead. Counselor Tontar?
I would just note one thing that, and I don't know if it's corrected, Richard, but the amount that's being transferred from salary of officers is $25,800 and not $21,000.
Pardon me, Ms. President, just for clarity's sake, maybe my clarity, can we recite the amount? Because what happens unfortunately when you take things out is the numbers aren't necessarily the same numbers because we give them to two more, more than one meeting.
Right. It's police department salary.
Mr. President, point of order, this is not in the packet?
All right, one moment.
It's transfer three from June 9.
See if we can find that in the packet first. Richard, is there?
Police Department, $21,000?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's not in the packet.
I don't see it either.
Well, if it's not in the packet, then it's not an item that's available for discussion tonight.
Well, we can waive the rules.
The council would like to waive the rules. You can certainly do it if you waive the rules, if that's all right, Ms. President.
I would entertain a motion to waive the rules so we can take this item up tonight.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion? All those in favor of waiving the rules to take this item up?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's 9I, 1A. So we're going to take this item up.
Just for clarity purposes, I have police department salary officers, $21,000, a purchase cruises, $15,000, maintenance equipment, $6,000, miscellaneous expenses, $4,800.
Counselor Tontar?
So this question, so we can't change, can we move to amend that $21,000, $25,800?
To increase it from $21,000 to $25,800?
Yeah, the transfer from.
I don't, I mean, the auditor could speak to this. It's my understanding that you cannot increase the amounts.
This is not technically changing the overall transfer. It was an error on this form. The last item was added at the last minute. That's why the math just doesn't add up. So it should be transfer from salary of officers for $25,800 in order to make the math work.
Absolutely, sorry, didn't realize it was.
Apologize, I wasn't clear on that.
There's a scribbler error that we didn't make for once.
Okay. So we'll read?
$25,800.
$25,000 to purchase cruisers?
Transfer it from.
Right.
Salary of officers.
And how will it be divided?
$15,000 to purchase the cruisers.
$6,000.
$4,800 to miscellaneous supplies.
Right. All right, are there questions from the members or comments? Counselor Argaman?
A similar question. Is there anything earth-shaking in this? Any surprises? Was this expected through our workshops and the budget?
Counselor Tontar?
No.
Thank you.
And a few words. Any further discussion? Counselor Cronin?
I just think it's important for the residents to know miscellaneous supplies of $4,800 is actually for a speed-tracking device, which is a traffic calming measure so they can get back out into the neighborhoods. They've been using those a lot.
And those have been effective. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Any other items from budget and finance?
Move to remove item eight from committee.
DPS sewer retained earnings.
Second.
Could the clerk read the item, please?
It's retained earnings, sewer, $400,002, meter replacement program, $50,000, west end easement, $150,000, vacuum truck purchase, $200,000.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Any further items?
Did we move that? I thought we just moved to take it out of committee.
Oh, I'm sorry. You moved it out of committee. I apologize, my error. Not the scribblers.
Too shy.
Is there a motion to act on that item?
So move.
Second.
It's been seconded. Now is their discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for the correction.
Move to remove item nine from the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of removing item nine from committee?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been seconded. Discussion? Counselor Tontar?
Just a second. I just wanted to note that all of these items are in the capital improvement plan, and it's, the transfer out is, you know, from retained earnings.
Thank you. Excuse me, would you read it, please?
Just for the record, it's DPS water, $250,000, two meter replacement program, $50,000, and water main replacement, $200,000.
The members know what item we're looking at here. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other items out of budget and finance?
Move to remove item 10 from committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of removing item 10 from committee?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been seconded. Discussion? Would you read the item, please, Mr. Clerk?
Water tank maintenance, this is coming out of water and sewer, $192,074. From all of these items, network expansion, $30,000, retained earnings, water, $60,000, propane pump station, $10,844, CIP flood study, $41,182, and CIP replacement of generators, $63,101, and from still, retained earnings, $91,371. Two DPS building project, $443,000.
Discussion? Counselor Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to point out, as the mayor's memo from June 2 refers, four of these are from capital projects that had not expended all their money, so basically they were brought in under budget. And I think that is, is great when we can do that and finish a project that then there's some surplus money that we can do other things that we want to do. I know in particular, we, you know, had a balance of $192,000 with the two water tank improvements, so that was great. So that's why we're able to do these things, because they're watching their dollars.
Counselor Tontar?
The Budget and Finance Committee had an opportunity to look at the plans for the new building, and they're a little, it's scaled back a bit from the original plan. This request, the necessity for this money, of course, $1.2 million was already approved. Necessity for more money comes from increase in construction costs. And that's in spite of the fact that the facility is a bit smaller than had originally been planned.
Always like to save some money. Counselor Herzog?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to the budget chair. This will be a DPS administration building. Will any of the existing DPS employees in City Hall be moved over there, or because it's being scaled back, there wouldn't be room for that?
I'm not exactly sure which employees are in City Hall, but water will be there, sewage will be there, right? There'll be a place for the public to go in to pay water bills, sewage bills.
Would Mr. Lombardi like to address that question?
So essentially, this new facility will house existing DPS water and sewer staff that are in the two temporary, long-term temporary trailers at the Parry Way facility, and will also house the four staff from the water and sewer office down congruent to the existing facility. So that's who will be down in that office.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that item passes. Thank you, Counselor. General Government? Any items coming out tonight?
Nothing at this time.
Joint Education?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so the public is aware, there's a meeting tomorrow night. It's a school committee meeting, and it's going to have a public discussion component regarding PARCC. If you're not familiar with PARCC, do a cursory search of P-A-R-C-C online, and you're going to get a lot of information, a lot of current articles on the Globe, local papers about, there's controversy about PARCC, and so this will be potentially voted on pretty soon. If we're going to partake as a district in PARCC, it replaces MCAS. And it's still in a test phase, so if you have an opinion, I highly suggest you come to the high school and be part of the conversation. It begins at 6:30. The business meeting begins at 7:30 PM. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. License and permits?
Nothing to report.
Neighborhood and City Services? Nothing at this time, except for an announcement. And that is, we'll be meeting on the 10th at 6 o'clock here. I'm sorry, at 7:30, I believe it is posted. Check with the clerk. To discuss item number two, the table of designated off-leash areas. And three, rules for designated off-leash areas.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think we have it at 5:30. Is that still true? 5:30 PM on the 10th?
I believe it's 7:30. I'd have to check again. I can't recall when we posted it. Does the clerk know offhand?
Offhand, I don't. I can tell you.
I believe it's 7:30.
Okay.
I know I have a 6 o'clock, but that's, I think there's a different meeting at 6.
I can get back to you at the good of the order.
Okay.
Is that it?
At the good of the order, I can get back to you.
Yes, okay, okay. Then we'll proceed. Planning and Development?
Mr. President, there is going to be a joint public hearing with the planning board on, I'm not even going to look at my calendar, on the Wednesday, July 2, 7:00 PM. And I believe that would be either here or upstairs. And that's regarding many of the items that are in committee, actually, all of the items that are in committee. So it's medical, marijuana, harbor master, floodplain, some corrections to downtown overlay and demolition control. So there's a little bit really for everybody that night.
What time?
7:00. 7:00 o'clock, Wednesday night, July 2.
That sounds like fun. So nothing's coming out. Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove item one in committee, Patriots for American Veterans Organization.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's seconded by Counselor Jinta. Discussion?
Thank you. We did amend this. If you look at the date, it says Sunday, October 4, with a rain date of Sunday, October 5. This one event, A, is taking up two days with a rain date, and secondly, you'll see in a few minutes that Geenie Geiger Crisis Center is having a walk on October 5. So we have amended this to say Saturday, October 4, rain or shine.
Questions for the Counselor or further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any other items, Counselor?
Motion to remove item two, waterfront trust handicap parking space.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor Cronin?
Very shortly, they're required to have three spaces down there that are handicap-accessible. They only have one, they only have two, I'm sorry. So this makes them compliant.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The clerk informs me, reminds me, that the ordinance should require a roll call. Clerk, please call the roll on that item.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Argaman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz?
Yes.
Counselor Herzog?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Thank you for the correction.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor?
Motion to remove item three, third annual cruise in the 50s.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Public Safety, anything else coming out?
Oh, yeah. Motion to remove Geenie Geiger Crisis Center walk against domestic violence, item four.
Second.
Been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second again. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes?
Motion to approve item five.
Second.
I believe the motion, just take it out of committee first.
I'm sorry, I meant to take it out of committee.
And it's been seconded. Take it out of committee. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion, Counselor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?